Okay, I'm calling this meeting to order at 4:31. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session of the meeting tonight will begin around 7:00 P.M. Item B, Reorganization of the Board. Item B1, Annual Organization of the Board of Education: Election of Governing Board Officers for 2024. Item B1A, Nomination of President.
I nominate trustee Water for president.
I will second that nomination.
Okay, a first by trustee Riser, a second by trustee Chu. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Nomination of Vice President.
I nominate trustee Eve Riser for Vice President.
Second.
A first by trustee Chu, a second by trustee Hart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. B1C, Nomination of Clerk.
I...
Okay, you go ahead.
I nominate trustee Lisa Chu for clerk.
I second.
A first by trustee Riser, a second by trustee Water. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. B1D, Appointment of Superintendent and Secretary to the Board of Education.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Riser, second by trustee Chu. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. B2, Adoption of the Board of Education Regular Board Meeting Calendar for 2024-2025.
I move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Chu, a second by trustee Hart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. B3, Signature Authorization/Register of Official Signatures of Governing Board Members.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Riser, second by trustee Chu. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Item B4, Board Member Liaisons and Representatives to Specify Communities for 20... Sorry, Committees for 2024. B4A, Curriculum and Student Support Committee.
President Gracia, I have a listing here of the committees for the trustees. If you would please take those and pass them down.
I wrote them down.
Yeah, good for you. Okay, Curriculum and Student Support Committee.
I'll nominate David Gracia, trustee Gracia, trustee Hart, and trustee Riser.
I second.
First by trustee Water, second by trustee Chu. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. All right, now we're on to B4B, Facilities and Technology Committee.
I nominate trustee Chu, trustee Gracia, and trustee Gonzalez Mares to the Facilities and Technology Committee.
I second.
First by trustee Riser, second by trustee Chu. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Item 4B, it's B, right? 4C, Finance Committee.
I nominate trustee Hart, trustee Jankowicz, and trustee Water to the Finance Committee.
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. All right, B4D, Policy Committee.
I nominate trustees Gonzalez Mares, Jankowicz, and Riser to the Policy Committee.
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. All right, B4E, Community Advisory Committee, Special Education, or CAC.
I nominate Lisa Chu.
Second.
First by trustee Water, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. All right, B4F, City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives.
I nominate Lisa Chu and Eve Riser.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and just for the record, that was a first by trustee Water and a second by myself.
The last first I'll ever do all year.
B4G, City of Napa Liaison Representatives.
I nominate trustees Gonzalez Mares, Hart, and Jankowicz to this representatives liaison.
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Moving on now to item B4H, Town of Yount Liaison Representatives.
I nominate trustees Gracia and Jankowicz to be representatives.
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Now we're on to item B5, Board Monthly Stipendent Increase.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. All right, now we're on to item C, Public Comment on Closed Session Agenda Items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. We have no public comment in the boardroom. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items online?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
All right, seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn to closed session.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Water, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate on Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Faviola Valencia and Francisco Mesa. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions. And can we please start with an...
Sorry. Yes, let's give those instructions. Sí, buenas noches a todos. Esta es la reunión de la junta del distrito escolar unificado de Napa Valley. Hoy celebramos una reunión ordinaria y les invitamos a participar remotamente o en persona. Las instrucciones sobre cómo participar a través de Zoom están disponibles en nvusd.org/bord. Y para acceder a la interpretación, en el momento aparecerá en la parte baja de la pantalla en Zoom un icono del nuevo terracayo. Haga clic ahí y elija Spanish o español. Desde una tableta o teléfono móvil en Zoom, busque tres puntitos que dicen "more" o "más", haga clic ahí, vaya a Language Interpretation o Interpretación de Idioma, y elija español. Gracias, thank you. Back to you.
I have to turn my mic on. Thank you. And can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, student board member McGrath.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Riser.
Present.
Trustee Chu.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Hart.
Present.
All present, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. F1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Chu, do you have a report on closed session agenda items?
Yes, I do. Agenda item E1, Student Discipline. With respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to Ed. Code 35146 and 489120, Government Code Section 49060 and 49078, and the Family Rights and Privacy Act, USC Section 1232G. Student Matters. Item E1A, Expulsions. Number one, the board recommends the expulsion for student 12142023A.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Number two, the board recommends the expulsion for student 12142023B.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Number three, the board recommends the expulsion for student 12142023C.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
And number four, the board recommends the expulsion for student 12142023D.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
And agenda item E2B, Personnel. In closed session, the board took action to release employee number 693 from employment.
Roll call vote. No roll call vote? Oh gee.
That's just a report out.
That's just a report out, sorry.
That ends my report.
Okay, great. Okay, now let's see if I can mess this one up. F2, Flag Salute, and I'd like our student trustee to lead us in the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and F3, Announcement. This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Okay, and let's see. F4, Approval of Agenda. I move to approve the agenda with the following modification. Moving item...
You're good, we have it.
K1B ahead of item K1A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Wait, do we have to have a voice vote?
No.
No, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, great. Now, F5, Approval of Minutes. A, October 12th, 2023.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. October 6th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, November 16th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
F6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have any visitors in attendance?
Thank you, President Water. I do not see any visitors in attendance in the boardroom or online this evening.
Okay, well, thank you. And G, my favorite part of the agenda is recognition of Students of the Month. G1, American Canyon High School. Okay, will Assistant Principal Pete please present the Students of the Month for American Canyon High School?
Oh, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you very much. It is my honor to be here representing American Canyon High School this evening on behalf of our staff, our students, and our families. We have two Students of the Month. Our first Student of the Month is present with us this evening, and it is Mason Gaskins. Mason, I'm trying to pull up the... I have so many things on my phone. I do apologize. Oh, here we go. All right. Mason was nominated by Ms. Leslie Campoy. She wrote that Mason is a model student who is quick to engage in class and offers answers or responses that help elevate class discussion. Ms. Campoy appreciates Mason's ability to put himself out there when we debate and to push himself. It is my honor to present to you Mr. Mason Gaskins.
All right, good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for having me, and I'd like to thank American Canyon High School for this award. It's an honor. I've been fortunate to have amazing teachers and principals throughout my education, and there's many teachers in school that staff members I'd like to acknowledge here tonight, but I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge a few. First off, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Campoy, who obviously nominated me for this award. I'd like to thank my counselor, Mr. Lanning. Without him, I don't know where I'd be. He's been helping me throughout high school, and he's helped me with my college applications. I'd like to thank Ms. Jennings, who was my first principal. And I'd like to thank my baseball coach, Coach Brown, who's been a role model, and he's been my coach for... This is going to be my second year, but he's been my coach for all four years, JV and varsity. Baseball's been an outlet for me throughout high school, and, you know, being able to play with a team has really let me express myself, I guess you could say. I've also been able to be lucky enough to join some clubs, including American Heart Association, Black Student Union, Embracing Black Culture, Theres Project, and a few more. I recently submitted my first batch of college applications, and I will continue to do so. Over the break, I'll continue with Common App applications. In the future, I hope to study business, and I have appreciated being able to begin my college career at MBC through dual enrollment. So, in closing, I would just like to thank my family, my parents, my sister Maddie, who are always there to support me. And again, I thank you to the Board of the District, the Board, the School District, and American Canyon for the award.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second nominee for the month of December, our Student of the Month, is Paige Rosal. Paige could not be with us this evening. They had a family trip, and so she was kind enough to share and give me the honor of reading her prepared remarks for her. Paige was nominated by Ms. Summer Hart. Ms. Hart writes that Paige is a well-rounded student, athlete, and performing artist. In her four years at ACHS, she has exemplified excellence, growth, and leadership through her participation in cheerleading, dance, leadership, drama, and multiple clubs and activities outside of school. Her commitment to her own learning, to the programs in which she participates, is exceptionally mature for her age. As a drama student for the past two years, Paige has shown unexpected creativity and problem-solving skills as the dance captain in Newsies, and this year has been appointed a Drama I Student Tutor. In this, in this role, Paige will be co-directing the beginning drama students in their first-ever onstage play, Alice in Wonderland. It is in her leadership role that Paige shines most brightly. She has a naturally patient and reassuring way of leading her classmates, no matter their age. In the leadership class, Paige served in several class ASV positions, and in drama, serves as the class historian. She is currently enrolled in three levels of drama: Drama I, Student Tutor, Advanced Drama, and Musical Theater. She exemplifies curiosity and kindness and is well on her way to leaving a legacy that will leave an enduring positive impact on the program she has participated in and the students who will follow in her footsteps. Paige has asked me to share her remarks with you this evening. It is an honor to be recognized as the Student of the Month. I feel incredibly grateful to be surrounded by people who love and support me, and I would first like to thank Mrs. Hart for nominating me. She has been the best guide and mentor that I could have asked for, helping me grow as a performer, leader, and person. At school, I have always believed the way to get the most meaningful experience you can is by involving yourself in the community and finding ways to give back. This is what motivates me to get involved in programs like student leadership, where I held the position of sophomore class vice president and junior class secretary. Theater, putting on plays and musicals for the school and directing the Drama I class in their first play as a student tutor. And the cheerleading team, showing up for games to keep crowd spirits high, performing at rallies, and competing at events. After high school, I plan to pursue a career in the film industry as a director. I hope to continue doing the things that I love, such as theater, cheer, and figure skating. Thank you for your time and for this meaningful award. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Thank you.
And Vintage High School, Principal Hutchinson will not be at the meeting, but will provide an introduction video. And our recognition of VHS will be via Zoom.
Good evening, Dr. Masetti.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Just before we launch the video, I just wanted to let the board and the community know that Principal Hutchinson was very sad that she couldn't be here tonight, but her own son has a choir performance that she wanted to attend. So, in lieu of her presence, she has a video prepared, but she just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that. And she's excited to celebrate her son tonight, but also excited to celebrate her VHS Students of the Month.
And the Board of Trustees, thank you so much for acknowledging our Vintage High students. I am very pleased to introduce two of our students for December, Lily Andrews and Shaheb Rozavi. I'll start by speaking about Lily. Lily is a student who brings kindness and positive energy anywhere she goes. She is a community servant and a natural leader, and she has an impressive resume of community service activities and areas of leadership. And one example of this is she is the founding member of our VHS chess club. Additionally, she sits on the teen board for the Napa County Library, and she also tackles our most rigorous classes with ease. She has participated in many AP classes and earned certifications from Napa Learns courses and utilized dual enrollment by taking classes at Questro Community College. Lily is among the top students in her graduating class, and she is a recipient of the If Given a Chance Scholarship and plans to study medical engineering in college. And we congratulate Lily Andrews. Thank you. And our next student...
Lily's online?
Yes, I am.
Good. Okay. Lily, would you like to address the board?
Yes, I would. Thank you so much for... Oh, sorry. Thank you so much for having me here today and for the board and Dr. Masetti for acknowledging me and allowing me to achieve this award. I just want to introduce myself. As you all know, my name is Lily Andrews, and I am a senior at Vintage High School. I love my family, friends, volunteering, music, video games, art, especially painting, sculpting, acting, and graphic design, and most of all, learning. Going to Vintage has been such a great experience for me with all of its support, opportunities for classes and clubs, and most of all, the teachers. I want to thank all of my teachers that I have had at Vintage. Every single teacher has been amazing, kind, and supportive with me and my educational journey. With their support, I have been able to grow into my own academically and emotionally as I go off into my adult life. I'd thank them all personally if I had the time, but I would just like to give a few shout-outs. First of all, I want to thank all my English teachers, especially Ms. Poizer, Mr. Anderson, and Ms. Lamont for all of their deep discussions and care they put into their teaching and students. Next, I'd want to thank my counselors, especially Ms. Johnson and Ms. Watkins, for the college, academic, and emotional support they gave me. Next, I want to thank Dr. King for working with me in starting up my chess club during the uncertain time of COVID and giving me the opportunity, space, and power to lead and bring my ideas to fruition. And finally, I want to thank Grace for her unwavering support for me and my mental health. You've assisted me in my educational journey so much with tests, clubs, social situations, and so much more. I always say, by grace, I have been saved. And I also want to thank my family and friends for all of the unwavering support they've given me over the years. After high school, I plan on going to a four-year university in California to study mechanical engineering. I chose mechanical engineering because I love math, science, and problem solving, and I have a desire to do more with my life. I believe that my purpose in life is to help my community and my world, and the flexibility and innovation of mechanical engineering would allow me to achieve this dream. Thank you all so much for acknowledging me and listening to my speech. Thank you all so much for acknowledging me and listening to my speech, and it is a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. And is our principal coming back?
Via video.
Via video.
Student Shahab Rozavi is also a top-ranking student at Vintage High School. Shahab will not only be earning his high school diploma when he graduates from Vintage in June, but he will also earn, or he has also earned his associate's degree from Napa Valley College already. He's completed that program already. Shahab started taking college coursework in middle school, and he's continued doing so throughout high school. He's been a participant of our ASB government program, our leadership class, and has participated and played on our VHS boys lacrosse team. Shahab is also the president of the VHS Backpacking Club, and with his leadership team, he has expanded and grown the program to the lively and vibrant club that it is today. Shahab balances his school life and maintains a job while performing at the highest levels in all areas. Shahab has participated in community service by working in a medical clinic, and he aspires to study law and business in college and eventually attend law school. And we congratulate Shahab. Thank you so much.
Mr. Michaels, not online tonight? Okay, he is not with us tonight.
Well, let's have a round of applause for our outstanding Students of the Month. I mean, this is my, this is my favorite part of the agenda. And I'd also like to thank the Napa Valley Education Foundation for sponsoring our Students of the Month. So, thank you so much. It's very inspiring. I feel confident about the future now. Whoa. Okay, we're at public, public comment on non-agenda items. Trustee Chu, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comments on, on, on non-agenda items were submitted via email before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Okay, do we have anyone waiting online to speak?
Mr. Michaels?
There are no public comments online on non-agenda items.
Well, all right. Thank you. Board of Education and Student Board Representative, we can start with Student, Student Trustee McGrath. Tell us what's going on.
Of course. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Happy almost winter break. I know I'm looking forward to a good three-week break. Since our last meeting on November 29th, I attended the CSBA Annual Education Conference in San Francisco. I attended the Student Board Member Program portion of the event, and alongside student board representatives from all over California, spent the day learning about my role as a student board member and how to be a better student board member. It was really awesome to talk to a bunch of other students who shared their position and kind of talk about, you know, what they do in their district and be able to relate to them. The following day, on November 30th, I participated in learning walks at an NVSD school site along fellow students, teachers, and administrators. During these learning walks, we talked to students in their classes to gain clarity on how they view their academic environment. And after these learning walks, we kind of debriefed and talked about our findings and things that we found similar amongst all the students that we talked to. And then on December 7th, I further discussed those findings with three students who also participated in the learning walks. On December 5th, I attended a student meeting for Teens Connect, which is a teen mental health advocacy volunteer group here in Napa. I was pretty involved with the group last year and haven't been super involved over the past few months. It was nice to meet up with everyone and see how I can be involved with them again. It's a great group of students from all of the high schools, and it's really awesome to see everyone super motivated to join the community. We talked about a lot of possible events for the next calendar year, so I'm really excited to see where that all goes. Also at that meeting, I met Yasha, an American Canyon High School junior, who shared with me about the nonprofit that she started this past summer called Self-Love in Hearts. The mission of this organization is to empower youth through building self-love and self-confidence. Yasha started this as resources, as a resource to help those going through struggles with self-love, and she has personally gone through those herself. Ultimately, SLH provides students with the opportunity to start chapters at their own middle and high school. I thought I'd share this at the meeting because when I heard this, I thought it was really awesome to see other students in our district building things around what they care about and really trying to help the students around them. On December 7th, I participated in the LCAP Student Advisory Council Meeting with representatives from all the high schools, where we split up into small groups to take a deep dive into specific focus areas for student needs. I personally chose to be a part of the Future Visioning Group. The Future Visioning is, we were talked about, you know, students having an idea of what they're doing after high school, where they're going, what they're interested in. So we talked about the need for CTE programs and giving students an option to, you know, discover their interests before they graduate high school so that when they do graduate, they have a good, you know, a good, like, framework for what they, what they might want after high school. On December 9th, I attended the NVSD Guiding Coalition at American Canyon Middle School. I had a great time discussing with parents, teachers, students, and administrators and doing some creative thinking about what we need to be a successful district and make our students successful. I felt like there was a really open space for students to be heard, for students to share their opinions, which was really fantastic. There were several high school students and a good amount of middle schoolers. I brought my younger sister, and I don't really know if she wanted to be there, but I was happy that she was there, and I was happy that there's a lot of students there. And, and it was really good just to see students being a part of the discussion and being, you know, like, like a center of the discussion. So with that, happy holidays, and I conclude my board report.
Thank you. Trustee Hart?
All right. I always have to follow the kids, and they're so good at this. I'll just be my normal brief self here. Back in November on the 17th, Dr. Mercedes and I were able to attend the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Latino Leaders Luncheon, which was great and very informative. I am echoing for some reason. And again, on November 29th through the 2nd, along with the rest of the trustees and the executive cabinet here, we all attended the California School Boards Association Annual Educational Conference, where we were able to spend multiple days in sessions with fellow school board members and superintendents and experts in various, various areas and be able to expand our knowledge base to help us improve our performance here on the Board locally. On the 8th of December, I visited West Park, which was pretty cool for me. I, I got to go into several class, all of the classrooms really, and kind of learned about, you know, the teachers that have only been there for 10 years are, are new, and they've got, they've got a lot of tenure there, and they, they have a real love for their little school and their, their small but mighty. So that was a really cool visit. On the 12th of this month, I was able to attend the Pueblo Vista Cultural Celebration, which was great and, and very adorable, as it always is. I spent a couple hours yesterday making ornaments with the fourth graders at Pueblo Vista. I still have glitter that's showing up in random places, as to be expected. And then last night, I was honored to be able to attend the Napa Valley Adult Education High School Equivalency/High School Graduation, which was really cool and probably one of my favorite graduation events that we do. Their speakers were great and, and very moving, and it was, it was a nice, fun event to be a part of. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Gracia.
Thank you. On the 17th, we did a run-through of our AEC presentation. On November 27th, I attended the CSBA Board of Directors Meeting. And then the 28th and 29th was the Delegate Assembly for CSBA Meeting. Then the 30th through the 2nd, I attended the AEC Conference, where we presented on superintendent evaluation. Our presentation was well-received by the attendees. And then I also had the opportunity to learn many new things and meet a lot of new people. On December 5th, I attended the NCOE Meeting, which was canceled and rescheduled due to improper notification under the Brown Act. Then on the 7th, I attended the rescheduled NCOE Meeting. On the 8th, I attended the Guiding Coalition. Same with the 9th. You've already heard from Student Board Member McGrath about what a great experience that was and how there was a lot of student voice, so I will not go further into that. On the 12th, I attended the NCOE regular board meeting. Then on the 13th, the Finance Committee Meeting. And then also on the 13th, the Adult Education Winter Graduation. And then today, we had a Deck the Halls event at the District Office. And that concludes my board report.
Thank you.
Trustee Chu.
So on the 18th, this is kind of on an aside. I, right after our last board meeting, I attended the big game of Cal versus Stanford along with several ACHS football team members. It's a great opportunity for the kids to really see what it is to play in the next level, so I'm really happy to see those types of experiences come to our students.
Go Bears.
Yes, go Bears. Cal won, by the way. On the 28th, I was part of the NVUSD DEI, I'm going to say DEIB as in Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Belonging Steering Committee Meeting with a couple of the trustees here. On the 20, on November 28th through December 2nd, I was also at the CSBA Annual Education Conference. A couple of the sessions that I attended, one was on ethics training, which is a new requirement for all school board members. That was very informative. And I also went to breakfast with the Asian Pacific Islander School Board Member Association with Trustee Water. And this past weekend, on the 8th through the 9th, I was part of the NVUSD Guiding Coalition along with Trustee, Student Board Member McGrath and, and Trustee Gracia. And it was really wonderful to hear student voice. It was amazing how open they were to telling us what they needed. So very grateful for, for you and your cohort to come and share your thoughts. And we were also treated to a performance by ACHS Choir, which is fantastic. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Rizer.
Thank you. Also, on November 28th, I, I joined the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Steering Committee next meeting. And just always enjoy the, the deep and meaningful discussions that we have in that space, shared, shared space with members of the community as well as members from various parts of our organization. And I'm really grateful to be part of a district that is focusing on that in such a meaningful way. I also, on that day, had my one-on-one governance meeting with Dr. Mercedes, in which we just touch base. It's once a year, twice a year we do that with each trustee?
Twice a year.
Twice a year. So I got my turn and always enjoy that opportunity. Along with everybody else, from the 28th to December 2nd, I attended the CSBA Annual Education Conference. It's, I'll be brief, but I'll just say it's a really wonderful opportunity to be able to sort of follow, sometimes follow my area of interest and sometimes follow the area of, whoa, I really know I need to beef up my understanding and knowledge about this. And then also, they're, they're really good at offering sessions to educate trustees about changes in the legislation and changes in policy and, and ed code. Also attended the mandatory ethics training. So that was a great experience and really inspirational keynote speakers. So all in all, a wonderful opportunity to learn and connect with my colleagues here on the DIES, but also across the state. On December 8th, I attended the Napa High Winter Choir Concert, which is always a beautiful, moving experience. And on December 13th, yesterday, I attended the Board Advisory Curriculum and Student Support Committee Meeting. And also the Adult Ed Winter High School Graduation, which, as Trustee Hart said, is really one of the, one of the highlights as a trustee to, to participate and, and an honor to be on this stage and celebrate those graduates. And that concludes my report. Oh, and I, and the holiday party today, the Deck the Halls. I decked some halls today.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Rizer. Okay, on November 17th, I attended Elf, the Napa High School Musical Theater Production, and it was great. And a couple days later, I went to see Hamlet, and the Napa High School Drama Club put that on. That was quite enjoyable. On the 5th, I had a meet, oh, on the, um, you know, the day after, the day after the Cal-Stanford game, I was on a plane to Boston sitting in a row with some very, very depressed young people from Stanford who were flying home to see their parents. And, you know, you know, you know, me and football, I went, oh, yeah, who, uh, won the game? And they said, Cal did. And I went, yeah. Okay, that's. Go Bears. Yeah, right. But, yeah, they were kind of the worst for wear. And that was funny. Okay. And then on the 5th, I had a governance meeting with the superintendent. And on the 7th, I attended an NCOE meeting via Zoom. And on the 12th, I went to the meeting in person. And on the 13th, which was yesterday, I, let's see, met with the superintendent in the morning. And then I attended the Finance Committee, and then I attended the Curriculum Committee. And that night, last night, I too attended the Adult Ed Graduation. And it was a wonderful event, and I'd like to thank the Gasser Foundation for giving the scholarships to some wonderful students who appreciated them. And today, I attended the Deck the Halls party and dragged in a million cans of food for the, for the food drive they were doing. I too attended CSBA, and, you know, I went outside my comfort zone and attended Sal Khan's Artificial Intelligence Event. You know, he was a keynote speaker, and of course, he informed, told us it was going to be totally awesome, and, but they had to put up some guardrails. And I attended the President's Workshop with, with actually an NCOE trustee, Cindy Beederman. And yes, we presented at the meeting and got pretty good reviews. And I attended the Golden Bell Awards. And just ran into all kinds of friends of mine from school districts all over the state, it seemed like. And a couple of kind of hit-and-run, super quick visits to Silverado Middle School and Napa High School. And it was a very busy month. And that concludes my report. Thank you. All right, the Board Representative reports. Okay, let, where are we? Sorry, this one is big type for my terrible eyes, and so I'm on different pages. Okay. Go back one more. And, aha. Board Representative reports. Okay. How about the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, CAC, Juliana Hart?
We have not met.
Okay, City of American Canyon Liaison Reps.
We have not met.
Lisa and Eve have not met. Okay. City of Napa Liaison Representatives. And, ooh, I'm the only person here who was at the meeting, and yes, we did meet. It was quite productive. Okay. And Town of Yottville Liaison Reps.
We have not met.
Not rep? Okay, great. And Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Great. Well, welcome aboard, President Water. So I'm very excited to have you here and your first night serving as Board President. And I would like to take a moment, as we bring you on this evening, to thank President David Gracia for his past year of leadership as our Board President. And thank you so much to the two of you who invested a tremendous amount of time over the course of the last, I don't know, six weeks or so, where we have been starting the process of the, you know, transfer of knowledge and the cross-training on being the Board President. So it's so great that we have that system in place in order to ensure effective governance. So thank you so much for all the collaboration and leadership with our new past president and our new current president. So, good evening, dear NVUSD trustees and community. So much has occurred since our November meeting, so I've decided to focus on just a few key highlights in my report this evening. I want to start out with a thank you to the trustees. They've all named their attendance as a key event in their board reports at the California School Boards Association Annual Education Conference in San Francisco this year. I want to thank you for all of your participation and engagement. I also want to thank the executive team that did. I also want to thank the executive team that did join us. I know that it, it's a full week. It's pretty exhausting, an exhausting week, but it's also a week full of really, really important learning. And I'm so glad that we have the system in place and the expectation in place where all of our trustees participate in the conference and even pre-conference activities. So thank you for all of your time. I appreciate all members of the governance team taking a few days out of their very busy schedules and lives to dedicate yourselves to professional development and learning related to matters impacting California public schools. So again, thank you. Also, several of you have named the Guiding Coalition event of last weekend, so I have a little bit to report and reiterate there. But I just, as a superintendent, want to congratulate Julie Bordas, our chief communication officer, and our district's core team. And that's with a team of folks, we call it the heartbeat of, they're the heartbeat of the work, who've been leading NVUSD's strategic visioning and planning process this entire year. We're almost at the halfway point, believe it or not, so I want to thank them for all of their hard work. We just hit this other important milestone last weekend. Guiding Coalition, which again is made up of approximately 80 individuals that represent the community. They had their second work session on Friday evening from 4:00 to 8:00, and all day Saturday from 9:00 AM to 4:00 at American Canyon Middle School. And like Finn named, it was just really energizing and exciting to have a group of approximately, I think it includes approximately 20 students that joined us to make meaningful contributions to the development of our graduate portrait, our employee portrait, and our system portrait, all which are going to serve as deliverables that, that we create as products of this lengthy process that we're engaging in. And once the portraits are created and finalized in our third session that's scheduled in February, those portraits will be used to then design our five-year strategic plan. So we're really excited about that work. Thank you for the investment of time and energy. I also just want to quickly share that it was a hectic week leading up to the Guiding Coalition, because I took a red eye out to New York City and a red eye back from New York City to be here back in time for the Guiding Coalition. I was there for a one-day meeting with the College Board in Manhattan, where their headquarters are. I serve on the College Board's Superintendent Advisory Council. I want to thank Director Monica Reddy, who provided me lots of input around the implementation of college board programs in our district, like the SAT Day and our Advanced Placement Programming. I found it very useful to use that feedback in this space. This is a space where the College Board elicits feedback from superintendents across the country on how their programs are being implemented. And also an opportunity for superintendents across the country to provide feedback on some of the new strategic initiatives that the College Board is adopting, one being their Career Kickstart Program, which is, the College Board is now doing research, development, and testing on, on career technical education course pathways and advanced placement-powered assessments in the career technical education arena. So stay tuned there. There's a lot of research and development happening, and I'm really glad that I get to be in that space as that work emerges, especially if that work being so in alignment with what we're doing around career readiness programs. And then also heard a lot about the first, you know, national implementation of the digital PSAT, SAT, and Advanced Placement exams, and hearing about the successes and challenges with that as they took that new digital format to scale. In addition, I want to thank Principal Knox for an outstanding visit yesterday at McPherson Elementary. It was a really, really exciting visit, because it's an exciting time at McPherson, and I just want to highlight that. McPherson is one of our schools that has so much possibility and promise. Principal Knox did a great job of demonstrating to me all of the strategies and tactics that him and his team are using with the support of the Student Services Team in increasing attendance rates at the school. And so that was great to hear, because we know if students show up to school, that means they're there to learn. We visited several classrooms. It was great to visit all of the classrooms. I was in, you know, kindergarten, TK, 3rd grade, 5th grade. But I just really want to commend, and all the, all the classrooms were great. But it was really great to see some rigorous, standards-based math instruction in the 5th grade classrooms, where students were using very detailed math notebooks as a reference for various concepts and vocabularies, which I felt served as a really great scaffold for many of the multilingual learners that are in that class. So it was just great to see the teachers teach to standards really, really effectively. And then I had a great time visiting the transitional kindergarten there. Trustees, if you have an opportunity to intentionally check out these new TK classrooms, they've got new furniture, you know, all, I want to thank Director Matt Reddy for equipping those classrooms with everything that they need. They are really warm, welcoming, welcoming and exciting new learning environments for our youngest four-year-olds. And it's amazing to see what four-year-olds are doing. We also have a new special education early learning classroom. It was great to see the students there. And then the special education preschool assessment team was their, that's their hub home base. And so they were there talking preschool assessments, of which there are many, for many of our early learner special education students. So thank you, Principal Knox, for an extraordinary visit. And we're so excited for all the things that are on the horizon. A magnet grant, a literacy grant, so he is really gearing up for implementation around all of these special initiatives that I am confident are going to impact and improve the educational outcomes for the students at McPherson in the immediate and long-term future. Lastly, I just want to close with a holiday message. As we approach the end of another remarkable year, I wanted to take a moment to extend my warmest wishes to each and every one of you in the NVUSD community. The holiday season is upon us, and it's always a good time for reflection, gratitude, and togetherness. We did have some great togetherness here at the central office at the Ed Center with our Deck the Halls party. So thank you to the planning committee that put that together. First and foremost, I want to express my heartfelt appreciation to our dedicated educator staff and administrators, who continue to just work tirelessly throughout the year to provide a very safe, nurturing, and enriching environment for all of our students. The unwavering commitment to student success and well-being does not go unnoticed, and I'm truly grateful for all your hard work and dedication. May your holiday season be filled with peace, happiness, and the warmth of family and friends. I hope everyone has a great last day of school tomorrow in the 2023 school year. And please remember to take time for yourself, self-care, relaxation during the well-deserved great break. Recharge your spirits, enjoy the company of loved ones. And I know that with that renewed energy and enthusiasm, we are going to hit the ground running in 2024. So with that, I'm going to turn it to the assistant superintendent, so they can report out on the work that's happening in their respective divisions. We're going to start with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Representative McGrath. As we wrap up calendar year 2023, in the season of celebration, the HR department wants to extend our wishes for a joyous and rejuvenating holiday season. And we know that holidays can also sometimes be a time of stress or sadness. And in the spirit of care and concern, we want to remind staff that we have an employee assistance program available to them 24/7. In order to access services, NVUSD employees may simply log into the staff portal on our district website, select featured resources, and choose wellness resources for all employees in order to reach the support resources, which include Optum, Kaiser Permanente, Carisolus, and Mentis. All of these services are available to our employees and family members. We look forward to returning in January and kicking off 2024 with our annual celebration of outstanding employees on the evening of January 23rd. We received close to 200 nominations for standout staff members, including teachers, other certificated student support personnel, managers, and classified employees in nine different categories. This week, we announced all the nominees, and after the break, we will have the opportunity to visit each one of them at work to honor them in front of their colleagues and students. The gala celebration on January 23rd will be held in Evans Auditorium and be livestreamed for friends, family, and fans to attend virtually. That night, we will announce which of the nominees will be going on to represent NVUSD at the county-level Employee of the Year selection process. We know that we have a lot of talented people working hard on behalf of students, and we want to sincerely thank all of the nominators who took the time this year to highlight these amazing individuals. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Next, we'll have Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who will report out on the work happening in the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President Water, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative McGrath, and the NVUSD community. For the second year in a row, an NVUSD employee has been selected as the State Administrator of the Year from the Association of California School Administrators, also known as AXA. So tonight, I would like to acknowledge Maria Sisneros. The principal of, the principal of Valley Oak and Napa Valley Independent Studies, who was selected as the Alternative Education Program Administrator of the Year for the State of California. Principal Sisneros works tirelessly to support her students and ensure that they are successful. Let's congratulate Principal Sisneros for her award and acknowledge her amazing distinction. Would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, Madam President Water, congratulations. Very exciting to be here, Board of Trustees, Student Board member. So nice to see you again. It was great to spend time with you on Friday and Saturday, the work, Dr. Masetti and our NVUSD cabinet and our distinguished guests that may be watching us right now. I just first wanted to thank Pat for your kind words. I wasn't expecting to speak, but I always come prepared, just in case. I'm truly honored to be here tonight and just have a heartfelt gratitude to Terlyn, the charter, or AXA charter, and also Richenford Charter. I was not expecting this, especially when, you know, it's often said that when you love what you do, it doesn't feel like work. And for, for me, this sentiment is really, is really tied to why my family came to the United States way back in the late 70s. It was in search of opportunities so that we, as children, the 10 of us, could have an opportunity to really live out our passion and be able to afford a livelihood here in the United States. So, you know, this journey is really, as I reflect on my journey, I never imagined to be a school administrator. I always thought I was going to be in counseling and stay there. But to be nominated by your peers and to be honored for this prestigious award when there's so many other educators doing such wonderful work throughout the state for every single child, I'm just humbled and honored to represent many, many, many educators that continue to do the work every day. So thank you so much for allowing me to be here today and honoring me today. I really appreciate it. I grew up and, you know, educationally here at NVUSD, professionally, I should say, here at NVUSD, had some wonderful coaches, and even have some coaches now where I used to coach when they were in 9th grade. I'm Director Reddy and actually trustee Gonzalez-Mares back when they were in 9th grade. So it's really nice to see full circle, all the work that we've done together throughout the year. So again, thank you so much for everything, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Principal Sisneros. We're really proud of you. Amazing honor. Also, since the last board meeting, the Instructional Division has been diligently at work wrapping, at work wrapping up the first semester of the school year. Elevating student voice is a continued focus of the instructional team. As Student Board Representative McGrath mentioned, the NVUSD Student Advisory Council met on December 7th. Given our district focus on the transition from middle to high school, we are excited to have new members on the council from the four middle schools and their principals. The NVUSD Student Board Representative and Alternative, so Board Representative McGrath and Mr. Kicked off our meeting with a warm opener, and we're in, and students were engaged in designing their perfect school. Students then met in school teams to share current practices in our three priority areas, which are future visioning, the transition from middle to high school, and building relationships. Students closed out the meeting by planning their focus groups, which they will conduct at each middle and high school between now and our next meeting in January. They'll gather feedback from other students on these three priority areas. Also, the first semester of ethnic studies, of the ethnic studies and health education course pilots are coming to an end this week. As we prepare for the second semester and the implementation of this new graduation requirement, district staff and teachers have met regularly as a professional learning community, engaged in revision and planning days, and participated in professional development. Additionally, district staff have visited classrooms where students presented their learning and conducted student interviews at each site. We are hearing a trend that students are finding value in the content they are learning. One student shared that, before I thought that ethnic studies was going to just be another history class, now I think that there is a lot that isn't taught in schools' curriculum or textbooks. You can be more empathetic towards people and know their stories because of this class. And I think that that speaks volumes to the amount of planning that went into those courses to make sure that they were meaningful to students. At the elementary level, 72 of our after-school expanded learning program providers engaged in one of the first of two sessions on positive behavior intervention and support training that was provided by NVUSD staff. Staff representing all elementary and middle school sites with expanded learning programs were trained on the importance of consistency in teaching and reinforcing behavior expectations from the, from the school day through the after-school program. How to engage students in restorative conversations, and how to proactively supervise areas of the campus where behavior challenges might occur. We continue to build strong alignment with our program partners to ensure a safe and supportive environment for students. As we work to strengthen our dual-language immersion program, teachers from Pueblo Vista and Napa Valley Language Academy came together last week to visit classrooms at, in VLA to observe reading instruction. Both sites are using a new highly rated phonics program that was launched last year and are working together with, working together to refine and strengthen the implementation. The grade-level teams from both sites met together with an expert coach to debrief the lesson observations and engage in lesson development and pacing for the upcoming unit. As you have heard, we had a press release around the new Agricultural Science and Innovation Center that's going to be at Vintage High School. In support of that, there is also a Agriculture, Science, and Innovation Advisory Committee at Vintage High School that was held on December 11th. The district staff provided an overview of what, what this advisory was going to do, and there was a presentation from the Future Farmers of America student leaders, as well as the Ag Science teacher, who shared what the current program, programming looks like. We really do appreciate our industry partners who joined us and local organization leaders and parents for partnering with us as we strengthen the alignment between schools and industry and increase work-based learning. I'm getting close to the end. We have had a lot of things going on. We continue to focus on improving student mathematic achievement outcomes by monitoring progress through learning walks. Learning walks are an opportunity to listen and learn with site leaders, staff, and students by visiting classrooms. Our focus on learning walks this year is student clarity and collaboration. So on November 30th, site principals, math teachers, visit classes at Redwood Middle School and Vintage High School. And for the first time, we had five members of our student advisory participate as well. It was powerful to have student voice in the debrief process as we reflected on what we noticed, and we wondered, and we wondered, and we wondered and thought of next steps. We will continue our learning together on January 11th at American Canyon Middle School, middle and high school. And to support math achievement at the elementary school, we provide Dreambox. You guys have heard quite a bit about Dreambox. Since the start of the school year until now, we've had 10,392 NVU students who have completed 95,208 hours and over a half million lessons in Dreambox Math, averaging about 42 minutes and four lessons per week. We currently have greater than 90% of our students across grades K through 8 regularly using Dreambox. And lastly, as we wrap up the fall semester, we are pleased to share that we had four mid-year graduates from the AXA and ADAPT program. These two programs address the intensive mental health needs of some of our high school students. It is through the dedication of the AXA and ADAPT staff that, that supports students who might otherwise either have left school early or been placed in non-public school settings to meet their goals of a high school diploma. And we are very proud of those four students who managed to navigate through some pretty significant challenges. And then lastly, I just wish everyone a wonderful restorative winter break. Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, for your thorough report. And next, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees business. And next, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees Business Services.
I will forego my report. I have two presentations later tonight.
Great. And Assistant Superintendent Pearson is not here this evening, so we will not have a report from the Operational Services Division. That concludes staff reports. President Water.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move to for approval of consent agenda, and that is Section J. And background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of items is requested by a board member. And so I guess I need a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, first by Gracia.
I'll second.
Second by Chu, trustee Gracia, trustee Chu. Let's see, student trustee?
Roll call.
Oh, we do a roll call. Sorry. We do a roll call, but first I should ask for public comments, right?
Sure.
Do we have any public comments, Mr. Michaels?
There are no public comments on the slide.
Okay. Great. Okay, so roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Ricer?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Now we are on. Sorry, I thought I turned it on. Okay, now we're in Section K, Presentations and Discussion Items. We're going to do K1B first and K1A second from Business Services.
Mr. Michaels, can you please bring up the first interim presentation? Thank you. So again, thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community about the first update for our budget, also known as the first interim report. Next slide, please. In terms of the economic outlook, we have had unprecedented revenue growth followed by, as a result of large government spending and very accommodative monetary policy, which led to record inflation. So other factors, such as increasing oil prices, increasing housing costs, also added to record inflation. The Federal Reserve responded to this by sharply raising interest rates in a very short period from 0% to 5.25%. Next slide, please. While inflation is moving in the right direction, the consumer continues to feel the impact of these past price increases, especially in the housing and food sectors. The Federal Reserve has paused interest rate increases, and it has even very recently indicated that they'll likely reduce interest rates next year. Sectors that are affected by interest rate hikes have been impacted negatively. So mortgage, real estate, technology, IPO markets are really negatively impacted by this. And so the big question is, did the Federal Reserve overshoot their target and is a contraction or recession coming? And so we already have indicators that there's definitely a slowdown in the economy. No one is really saying that there is actually a recession going on currently, but there is still a chance that that could happen. Next slide, please. So the revenue outlook is actually, it's poor. It's actually very, very poor. And so consumer has been very flat recently. The job growth has been relatively slow, reduced investments in business startups and expansion, and lower state income tax collections have actually, they've come down quite a bit. And so what you see even happened since this presentation has been put together, there has been a dramatic reduction in the outlook in revenues at the state level. There's actually a $68 billion with a B shortfall in terms of the revenue outlook, which we'll talk about in future slides. Next slide, please. So the budget process doesn't typically involve large changes due to prior year revenues. This is because prior year taxes have usually been filed and the associated revenues collected. 2022-23 revenue shortfall is estimated to be $26 billion below projections, so that's just for one year. And so again, this is largely due to the fact that the tax deadline was extended to November. Usually, when you build a budget in June, you know what revenues will be from the prior year. This did not occur due to the extension of the tax deadline. So this slide, this is a new indicator that I recently became aware of. So it's called the SAM rule. It's a pretty, it's actually, right now, it's 100% accurate indicator of a coming recession. So essentially, what they look at is they say, they look at the three-month moving average for unemployment, and if it's 0.5 higher than the low for the prior 12 months, it does indicate a coming recession. So those black dots indicate where the SAM rule was triggered. The blue line indicates the unemployment rate. So you can see going back in 1980, it went from a low of about 6% to about 11%. You can see, just going to our recent past, due to the pandemic, unemployment rate was around 4%. It jumped for a very short period up above 14% and then came back down. So you can see the indicator has occurred. So again, whether we have recession or not, if history repeats itself, we can't confirm that, but we know that typically what happens after periods of inflation, the Federal Reserve responds by raising interest rates. Usually, the impact of those raising interest rates, it takes a while before it actually works its way through the system. But historically, what the Federal Reserve has done is they continue to raise interest rates until they actually see signs that things are changing. By the time they see the sign, sometimes it's too late and they've gone too high. So we'll just have to wait a little bit. We'll certainly know in the next 12 months what things look like. Next slide, please. And so I presented on this slide in the past, I think I probably brought up the exact side three times. It's an important slide. What it shows is the Prop 98 Minimum Guarantee. I just want to remind people, that's the minimum amount that we're required to get. There's no rule that says that schools, school districts can't get more than that. But the line that you see there that I drew with the arrow above the bar graph, that's what we call a trend line, where revenues historically been. You can see historically, there's been a fairly large growth, but it's been steady. But then what happened in the very recent past, you can see that the revenue lines or the bars far exceeded the trend. And so historically, what happens when you exceed a trend, you're going to come back down, and you can see that happening right now. So you can see, I drew the red line. You can see that's where revenues are anticipated to be for 2223 year. So again, what will happen in the future, historically, what history tells us is you're going to drop below that trend, right? So you get periods of large growth, followed by a swing back down. So what we should plan for is a big drop in revenue. Next slide. So again, a full recession is not necessarily in the cards for the next 12 months. Nobody is calling for that. A slowdown for sure is definitely coming, but not necessarily full bore recession. But it's hard to tell. It could certainly happen like that. So I did just read an article tonight where the governor did request, not school districts, but, you know, state government agencies to freeze spending. So what can that mean if you say, hey, we want you to freeze spending in the current year? Could mean that there's a clawback in the current year even. So we don't know, we won't know until January 10th what this will look like, and so we just need to be prepared for that. So again, we've had unprecedented revenue growth over the last two years. You can see personal income, corporation, and sales taxes grew by 30% and 20%, but then for 2223, it went down by $26 billion. So you can just see this enormous shift that happened. So the revenue outlook, again, it's opaque to poor. We know that there is an enormous overstatement of revenue for the prior years. What do revenues look like for the out years? Well, there's certainly going to have to be a re-benching of what that looks like in the out years, too. So if they overstated revenues in the prior years, they likely overstated revenues in the future years also. So based on what we knew just in the last budget that we adopted, if you compare the two, the revenue outlook is very poor. Next slide. So this slide is not intended to talk about Napa. So when I say a return to layoffs, I'm not talking about what's going to happen here in Napa, so I want to be really clear about that. But will there be a return to layoffs in terms of a statewide basis in education? I would say that there's a very strong chance of that. So we know in looking at some of our neighbor districts and some of the large urban districts in the Bay Area, we've already heard of very large layoffs coming, you know, that that's how school districts respond. When you spend 80 to 85% of your money on your employees, the only way to respond to a revenue cut or even just flat revenues that you didn't plan for is to reduce your number of employees. Again, not talking about us, we're in a fairly stable position, but it's going to depend on what happens in January, and everyone just needs to be prepared for something that looks like what happened during the Great Recession. Next slide. And so this slide just kind of depicts the, I call it the cost of living roller coaster that we've experienced. So the cost of living adjustment for schools was 8.22%. That's what we received for 2324. I don't know how much it was overpaid, but I would say, based on the revenue that we know now, the state likely gave schools more than they should have received under Prop 98. So there'll need to be some reckoning in the budget. Again, we don't know what that looks like going out into the future. The COLA was projected to be 3.94% for next year. That's been reduced to 1% to 1.27%. Now again, that's based on an inflationary factor. We don't know if that necessarily will be funded. There's even a possibility that we could have a negative COLA. Again, we just don't know at this point. So this slide talks about the impact of Myo Commiss Charter School, and so this is a challenge, I think the biggest challenge is cause a great deal of uncertainty for the school district. Enrollment in the charter school directly impacts ADA and shifts revenue from the district to the charter. The charter school projected an enrollment of 180 students for 2324, but approximately 70 students actually enrolled. The number has varied. I think it's been as high as 75. That's not the exact number, but it was definitely lower than 180. Next slide. So the charter later submitted a countywide charter petition with enrollment increasing to 414 students over time. Should this petition be approved, it would have a large negative impact on the district and cost the district in excess of $4 million per year or about $16 million over four years. So the petition was recently pulled for the countywide charter petition for now, but there was an indication in an email that they planned to regroup and potentially resubmit. So again, we do need to prepare for this. We're not sure of the impact right now. Next slide. So one of the impacts that we do challenge is one-time funds. Again, I will be presenting on this later tonight, so I will not go into detail on this right now. Like almost all school districts, we did use some one-time funds to hire some additional positions to address learning loss and provide services for students. And so that was very commonly done. We were conservative with the number of positions that we add, but it is something that we need to address. I mean, positions were, again, primarily added to support students and the operational impact of COVID. The remaining one-time fund going forward will primarily be used for some discretionary one-time spending. And again, I'll talk about this in great deal in the next presentation. Next slide. So what are some of the challenges with the one-time funds? Divisions will need to make difficult decisions and cut expenditures by using data to determine what's working and what is not. And so it will feel like a cut to the district because with these one-time funds, with limited one-time funds available in the future years, it will feel like a cut. Districts have become used to having these additional funds to add additional services for students. And so again, we know that these funds are coming to an end, and there's even potential for the state to claw some of that money back. And so they do have a history of doing that. There was a reduction of the one-time funds that we have already. So again, given the revenue outlook, that's definitely not off the table. There is a possibility that some of our one-time bunnies, one-time funds could be clawed back. Next slide. So this slide depicts a summary of our budget. You can see in the revenue line, our revenues are anticipated to go down in 2425. We did put in, we did adjust for the 1% COLA. We did not keep the 3.94%. We adjusted it down for 1% to be conservative. Again, we don't know if that will be funded. We'll know more. So at second interim, we will add the correct cost of living adjustment in there into the model. You can see that there's a reduction. So you might ask, well, why is there a reduction in revenues? That's largely due to declining enrollment and then also the impact of lower attendance rates. So the historic attendance rate for school district is about 95%. That was a rate for us and most districts. That was pre-pandemic. During the pandemic, it dropped down to about 90%. Through some great work, through instruction and others, we've really focused on getting up our attendance rates. We're at about 93% right now, which is what we put in the projection, but we'll just have to watch that closely. It could easily drop back down to 92%. So we'll just watch that. That will impact the model that we see going forward. In terms of our reserve percent, our reserve percentage for economic uncertainty is 9.96%. You can see, due to deficit spending, we do, you have to dip into our amount of money that's assigned for declining enrollment, and so you can see that number reduce over time. So again, we'll have to watch this closely. Overall, I would say that we're in a very stable position, given the economic outlook that we have. So what are the assumptions that have been put into this model? So the assumptions include the three-year average for ADA continuing to drop. So again, school district did receive inflated ADA due to the pandemic. This will be continually reduced by a third every year. TK class funding will drop down to 20 in 2425. A funded COLA for the current year, 1% for next year, and 3.29% for 2526. That number is likely to be, you know, reduced to, again, we're not really sure at this point. We'll just have to watch it. Stepping column, the cost of that varies between 1.5% and 2%. We do value compensating our employees, but given this outlook, there'll be limited funding for the NVUSD compensation formula. Next slide. And so what are our recommendations and next steps? So approve positive certification for our budget. You know, both certified and classified cuts will likely need to occur, but may match the natural attrition rates. Certified cuts will primarily occur at the secondary level. And so what does that mean? And so later on in another board meeting, as we get closer to the spring, I will bring an official enrollment projection to the board. What I've seen in the initial analysis is an increase enrollment at TK due to the new age requirement, so a slight uptick there, a little bit of an uptick in kinder, and we see some pretty strong, a pretty strong decrease in enrollment at the secondary level, especially here in Napa. So both Napa-area high schools, the larger comprehensive high schools, are seeing a projected drop of enrollment of about 100 each, right? And so it's hidden in the slight increase that we're seeing at the lower level. So there is going to be some shift, and there will need to be some reductions at the secondary level due to that. And so what are our other next steps and recommendations? Again, continually fiscally conservative and prepare for no to negative revenue growth. Next slide, which I think is the conclusion. At that, I open up to questions.
Well, I don't know, do we go by row? You can just burst out if you want to speak. I can't remember if we go in order or not.
No, usually people raise their hand.
Well, you're looking as if you are full of questions, trustee Gracia.
Yes, so I will burst out, I guess. Tonight's report is definitely not good news, right? The physical outlook for our future appears grim. I'm concerned about how this very significant drop in revenues is going to affect our solvency going forward. I'm urging the business office to continue to make the necessary changes and cuts to get the out year down to a non-negative budget by the time we reach budget adoption. Year two, not year three. It appears that a congruence of negative factors are all hitting at one time. The loss of the ADA inflation, the drastic drop in state revenue next year, the overestimate of state revenue in the last two years, leading to a $26 billion shortfall this year, along with the beginning of the expiration of some of the one-time monies. These things all point to us rapidly approaching a fiscal reckoning in the 2425 school year. I'll be keeping a close eye on the January budget put out by the governor, as this will be our first real indication of just how bad things could get, and I encourage the business office to pay close attention to expenditures and pursue cost savings in order to balance our budget for next year.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment?
I'll just briefly say that every time we have the budget report... I'll just briefly say that every time we have the budget report, Assistant Superintendent Mungwala, I'm just in awe of the task that is, that you face as a CBO of a school district where the, it's such a moving target and you're having to make real decisions when the equation is still full of variables. So it's really clear that we're on a roller coaster ride here, and the announcement of the governor's spending freeze is certainly beyond concerning as an indicator of how they're feeling about the economic outlook for our state. So I just wanted to thank you for your diligence and, you know, the high degree of expertise that you bring both to these presentations, but to your work in keeping our district as protected as possible from the extremity of these swings. And the presentation that you gave was so clear and the fact that, you know, I concur that we're, with Trustee Gracia, that we're concerned. And I wanted to point out that we are, we are protected because of that, the additional set aside for the declining enrollment, the funds required to protect us in a declining enrollment environment. And we're just seeing in this presentation how deeply unstable and difficult to call and forecast this, our current situation is. So thank you for keeping our system as safe as possible from those swings that other districts, I imagine, across the state are not, and it's good of a position to weather this big storm that's coming.
Yeah, thank you so much. And then I do want to just point out two quick things. So I forgot to mention too, that so one of the things that could likely make this a little bit better than the Great Recession and the dot-com boom is that, again, the state is in a better shape too. So they have the state reserve, then they have the reserve for Prop ninety-eight. And so those funds, assuming that they dip into those funds, there's the ability to make, keep the impact away from ongoing spending or ongoing funds for school districts to the greatest extent possible, right? So I have heard some very positive news in terms of like, you know, there's this desire at the state level, at the legislator level, to protect schools to the greatest extent possible. So we don't know what's going to happen. You know, there's going to be lots of things that happen, but, you know, given, you know, those reserves, giving our, and given our reserves, you know, I think people have time to think about it, move carefully and not be reactive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this. I think that some of the actions we took a few years ago have put us in a better position than we would have been otherwise. Also, I think of the word unprecedented. When I was a young person, I used to greet it with sort of joyful certainty that everything was going to be great, you know, though it's taken on a more grim meaning lately. And I'm not really surprised by this because, completely surprised because the income tax, taxes were allowed to be turned in later, and so we were, didn't really have an accurate picture. We were overly optimistic and probably it's not a good idea to rejoice when a mouthy billionaire moves to Texas because those people do pay a lot of California state taxes. But as my neighbor here said, Trustee Reiser, thank you for what you do. I have confidence that we're going to get through this. We've been in worse situations and we learned from them. So thank you.
Thank you.
And now for the next presentation.
All right, okay. Again, thank you so much for everyone's time tonight. So this presentation actually probably should have been split into two presentations, but what I've done is I have given it two separate parts. So the intent is to update the board on the community on how we've spent our one-time money and then also propose about how we will spend the remainder of our one-time money going forward, assuming things aren't changed. And so this school district, since the beginning of the pandemic, has met and worked with stakeholders and met as an executive cabinet team to develop a plan to address some of the challenges of COVID and learning loss. And so what you'll see in this presentation is you'll see how we've spent the money and how, and in the second part, we'll talk about how we propose to spend the money going forward. Next slide. So again, section one, update the community and the board about how we spent the money, including this current year, which is where the vast majority of the money will expire, and then our plan for the remaining funds going forward. Next slide. So just as a little bit of background, so districts across the country received substantial one-time funds during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Funds have been allocated over a variety of fiscal years. We've received both federal and state funds. Some of the funds we received were, they called them state funds, but they turned out to be federal funds. So there's lots of confusion in the beginning. There was a lot of move in the, again, positive intent in response to the pandemic to get the funds in school districts' hands as soon as possible. Lot of times the funds landed, the rules came out after we started spending them, right? So that is something that happened during the pandemic. And so a large portion of the funds, again, will expire at the end of this fiscal year, which we'll see in the next series of slides. Next slide. So districts have added a great deal of personnel and non-personal services to one-time funds. So typically what you say is you should not spend one-time funds on personnel, but just due to the enormous size of the funds that were allocated to schools, it was an impossible task. So I would say every school district added personnel in one form or the other. I would say that we are fairly conservative about our add and we're in a good position. Other districts spent the money really fast and they're in a much more difficult position where they're going to have to do very large layoffs for this coming year. Fortunately, we are not in that position. So, but what will districts need to do, including us, is we will need to unwind expenses over a maximum of four years, right? And we say unwind expenses, there's different ways to do it or to look at it. We have a combination of personnel. I like to think of it two different things. There's things that eat and breathe personnel, and then there's non-personnel. And so our goal going forward is to maintain personnel and services for students to the greatest extent possible. And then for the supplemental services, which we'll see in the next series of slides, those will need to go away and it will feel like a cut. It's not a cut, but it's just less spending will be available going forward. So again, there's little room in the general fund slash supplemental to make personnel and non-personnel services permanent. You saw from the previous presentation, their revenue outlook is poor. So, you know, in a perfect scenario, it wouldn't look like this. We would have, continue to have increased revenues and then school districts would have the ability, as those one-time funds went away, to wrap all of that in their general operating budget. But we know that's not going to be possible, given the budget outlook for the next couple of years. Is there potential for serum? Yeah, it depends, but we really won't know. We'll have a glimpse of what's going to happen based on the budget proposal. And remember, that's just a budget proposal that comes out in January. We won't know until June, and sometimes there's just an adoption of a placeholder budget and you really don't know until you come back in September. And so that's kind of what's happened the last couple of years. So revenues, again, will likely be flat or down next year. Now we know it's down. Again, I wrote this before we knew about the sixty-eight billion dollars. I did add a little bullet on there just recently sitting at the table, so I kind of cheated on that and I added that note late, just to be clear. Again, the revenue outlook, it's not as opaque, it's just poorer. It really is poor going forward. Next slide. So in looking at the categorical funds, they are category, I should say, looking at the one-time funds, they are very categorical-like. There are literally thirteen different pandemic-related resources. Each resource has different expenditure requirements and has different goals and reporting requirements. Expenditure guidelines and reporting requirements, they do frequently change. Again, an example that we like to use is we receive funds that we're told were state funds and they literally made a mistake and said, oops, I'm sorry, we actually received this from the federal government. We need to change the rules on you after you receive the money. So those are the kind of things that happened. Again, I like to think good positive intent, they're just trying to get money in everyone's hands as quick as possible. Next slide. This slide with, shows all the different resources. You can see the vast majority of the funds that we have left fall into the federal category. There's a brief description of it on the right. The vast majority of the money was to address learning loss, return to in-person instruction. That might feel like a decade ago, but there were funds given to school districts to encourage them to come out of remote learning and to come back to in-person learning. There was money added specifically for paraprofessionals, for health, counseling, and expanded learning. So the total one-time funds that we have that will be expiring of this fiscal year is thirty-three million dollars in our district. So it's a pretty substantial amount. This is why I'm saying it will feel like a cut to the system to not have all those supplemental funds floating around. Next slide. So these are actual expenditures through the end of six-thirty, twenty-three. So you'll notice there's a discrepancy in those two lines. And so the previous slide shows what we have to spend by the end of this year. This is what we spent as of the end of last year and how we allocated the money. So we've added staffing to ensure student and employee safety. We've purchased safety-related supplies, new curriculum, professional development, materials and technology, mental health services, and done things to address learning loss. And so what this slide also shows is how we've kind of split up the money. You can see across departments, we have some money put aside for assessment, business services, there's money put aside for the district for one-time stipends and the increase in unemployment insurance, human resources, instruction, operations, and other items. Next slide. So this slide is a reminder of what we're spending on positions. So as a district, we currently have about forty-one FTE in one-time funds. And so these are the categories of some of the positions, and you'll see when we talk about our plan going forward. So our plan going forward as an executive cabinet team, what we wanted to do is continue services to the greatest extent possible. And so create stability in the district. So we have about three point three million dollars in positions. And so what we like to do going forward is continue that to the greatest extent possible moving forward. So in a perfect scenario, our one-time funds won't be cut. That would allow us to continue that for approximately three to four years, depending on how things go. Next slide. So these are the allocations for the current year. So these are some of the things that are happening in this current fiscal year. So the data department has added some stuff to support teachers in the background. So in the past, the LPAC test or the test for English language learners was provided by teachers. In order to ease up on that burden, we hired LPAC testers that go into the classroom. We see, we see better results because we have, you know, given, we're given the test in a standard manner. It relieves the testing burden on teachers. We use Tableau a lot for some of our data systems. We've also had a need to add additional subs, so it's starting to come down a little bit, but during the pandemic, we spent quite a bit on SubHub where we had a resident sub who stayed at each site. So again, we're starting to see that come down. Instructional service has some funds for contracts and some additional money for intervention. So there's one point eight million dollars for intervention in the current fiscal year. Four hundred thousand dollars for business, for the business office, for communications and the strategic plan. There's some funds for maintenance and operation and technology. Next slide. So that concludes the section on the update for one-time funds. Maybe what we can do, I'll just propose questions if you want to just put that at the end of both presentations, is that okay? Okay. So for the next series of slides, I'll be talking about our plan moving forward.
Do we want to take a break or do we want to just go right through and finish up the meeting? What do you think?
We want to take a break, but I don't know if we want to break mid-presentation.
Okay. So we have this nine o'clock tradition that I'm ready to break. Okay, great. So just go ahead and do your presentation. Thank you.
Okay. So we have, we have two remaining one-time funds. So we have the arts and operation funds, and so those funds expire in twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then we have the learning recovery funds, which expire in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so or four years. Next slide. So these are the allocation amounts. So eight point six million dollars for the arts and operation funds, fifteen million dollars for the learning recovery emergency block grant for our total of twenty-three million. These funds were reduced in the current fiscal year. So again, we don't, we're not really sure what will happen. We're keeping our fingers crossed, but my guess is there will be a reduction in these funds. We don't know for sure, but it could very well happen. So you saw the slide previously, but I wanted to remind you of the number because it's connected to our plan. And so what we're essentially saying is we have this cost of employees of about three point three million dollars. That's the cost in the current fiscal year. So remember, the money that we receive is the money received. There's no COLA added to the funds that we receive, but the cost of the employees continue to go up. At a minimum, it'll go up by the cost of step and column. Even if there's no raise, that cost will continue to go up. And so when we plan as an executive team and start to think about, okay, well, what will that cost be for four years? It's not four times three point three million, it's four times three point three million with the increased cost for the employees going through time, where you adjust for cost of living adjustment and then a potential salary increase too. Next slide. And so that is what this model is. So essentially, over time, we're projecting it to be about eighteen million dollars over this time period. Again, we'll have to watch this closely. We'll see, the number could very well change. Again, the three point three million dollars is the cost in the current year. When I built this model, it was before we knew what the cost of living adjustment would be. So I would anticipate that we would not have a cost of living adjustment of four percent next year. But for now, that money is there. So what does that mean? If we spend less on personnel, that just means that we have more for additional discretionary services, but it's not going to, I think the biggest factor that we have here, which will impact this program, is the expiration of the funds, right? So that's not going to change. If the funds expire in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, then that's the last, the last year that we can continue with these services. Next slide. So what are our big picture recommendations? Again, continue to fund positions first, the remaining funds to be spent on discretionary items. And then another thing that we need to consider, again, not necessarily the case for the current year, but we do need to figure out how we start to unwind this, right? So in a perfect scenario, we have room for all the services in the general fund. But that's, right now, that's not the outlook that we have. So that's, I certainly can't make that promise right now. So we'll have to, you know, internally, we'll start to have these discussions about what that looks like. It might be, you know, like what some school districts do is they have a freeze on filling positions, right? So maybe what you do is when the, once some of these one-time positions, when they become vacant, you just don't fill them anymore, right? And so what that does is that creates a little bit of tension between school sites because you have one site that has it and one site doesn't. Maybe you reallocate. So there's lots of different ways to do it, not saying that that's the only solution and the proposed solution, but really with this revenue outlook, we need to look kind of like at all things and think of it in a manner to, you know, to impact the classrooms the least. Next slide. And so what this shows is, again, a model of what it would look like. You see, again, taking care of personnel first, that's the first rule going across the top, and then discretionary. So again, in a perfect scenario, what it would look like is we'd spend about three point three, three point five million dollars on positions for twenty-four, twenty-five, and then have about two million dollars a year for discretionary funds. So if you just think of the current year, the example where I talked about the current year, we have about seven or eight million dollars in the current year, but now we're talking about two. So this is what I mean, where I'm saying it will feel like a cut to the system when you say you only have about two million dollars in additional discretionary funds to meet learning loss. Next slide. So what are some additional details? Again, declining enrollment, inflated COVID-era ADA, and dramatically reduced COLA will make it very difficult to add personnel to the general fund. Divisions and departments will need to evaluate and substantially reduce their expenditure of one-time funds for twenty-four, twenty-five, and it will feel like a substantial cut. We need to start the process of eliminating contracts and services that can't be afforded going forward, and that's part of the evaluation process that departments and divisions will go through as a part of budget adoption for this coming fiscal year. So final decisions will need to be made by each department before annual contracts go to the board in the spring. And so what you typically see in the spring is you'll see a bunch of contracts that come to the board in May and June. And so what will need to happen with departments right now and divisions is you can't just roll over your contracts because there's not going to be that same allocation. And there's still be, might be, you know, some uncertainty around the budget, you know, knowing that budget adoption doesn't happen until June. So what does that look like? You know, departments and divisions will have to look at all of their contracts and say, this is what I can afford to do with my general fund, this is what I like to be able to do with one-time funds, and they might have to bring some of those contracts later. And they might have to bring some of those contracts later when things become clear. So there is going to be uncertainty for, for, for everyone. There's really no way around it. The worst thing that we could do is take contracts to the board that we can't afford to pay for. So again, final decisions will have to be made before departments take contracts to the board. You know, in a, in a perfect scenario too, that, you know, we'd be able to determine if there's some positions that can be moved from the one-time funds into grants. So again, we don't know what that looks like. There could be a continuation of grants, but you know, one of the thing, one of the proposals I did see by the governor was they could possibly not continue to add new schools to the community, community grant, right? So I don't anticipate that they would take away the funds that we receive, but they certainly won't add more. So the grant outlook could also dry, bring that example up because a grant outlook for the next couple of years could seriously dry up and look very different, different than what we, what we've seen in the past. And with that, I think that's, questions? Or is that one more slide? Next step. So again, continue to work the departments to ensure expenditures are eligible with the 13 different resources. We have a lot of reporting deadlines that we continue to work on these funds. Lots of work in bureaucracy in the background. Departments will again, will need to continue to evaluate and eliminate previous expenditures on contracts and services that are not sustainable in the operating budget. We need to update this COVID expenditure plan for arts, operation, one-time money going forward. What you will see at the next board meeting is a formal adoption. So I, I did miss putting that down as an action item. And so I did get a little clarity from our auditor that it's not just a presentation, that it needs to be a presentation and adoption. So what you'll see at the next board meeting is you'll see this plan, you know, it'll just be listed as an action item. So the only requirement, so there's not technically a time deadline this year. We're doing it early. We just need to adopt the plan prior to spending the funds. We haven't started to spend these funds yet. Next slide. And ask questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah. So as our one-time funds expire or are used up, I feel like we need to be really careful to communicate when these reductions happen and demonstrate to the community that these are happening and it's a reduction to staff or services because one-time monies have disappeared or because the government has chosen to claw these monies back. So I think the communication component needs to be elevated in our moving forward process as we do that district-wide evaluation of where can we scale back? What programs are we not going forward with in the future? I think as those decisions get made, we want to be sure to be really transparent to our communities and our parents about why these things are happening so that they're not sitting here thinking that we're just arbitrarily chopping things out or, you know, making these decisions, that there's reasons behind it and that they are tied to the financial budget that the one-time monies are disappearing. And then I'm hoping that our grant writing team can help us to find some appropriate grants to move some of these employees into as we reach the end of the 27, 28 school year. It is a bit worrisome seeing that we have 41 people being paid for with one-time money who we can't afford to pay out of the general fund, but who provide necessary services to our students. This is especially concerning when we recognize there is a real possibility that these one-time monies might be clawed back by the state, shortening the timeframe we have to find other funding sources.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. So we will be watching that and then I will work with, with Superintendent Dr. Musetti to make sure and look for spaces to talk about the budget as we, additional spaces as we adopt the budget and talk about things going forward. So definitely we'll, we'll be front of mind.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Assistant Water, can I?
Yes, no, go ahead.
Before you close us on this item, I just want to take a, a moment to thank Assistant Superintendent Minkwala and his Fiscal Services team. I know Executive Director Jennifer Burrows is online, our new director, who oversees all of the categorical funding, who play a critical role as we advance this work, Director Claudia Alcantad. So I want to thank you. I know how much work. I, I love how Trustee Rizer described it as a constant moving target. It is that, with lots of variables, unknown variables that you have to quickly respond to. And this, you know, this does impact our entire leadership team. I want to also recognize instruction. They've had to be really thoughtful and strategic in addressing learning loss and aggressively trying to respond to this, the, the pressure of improving student achievement levels, particularly after the impacts of the global pandemic on all of our students, TK through 12. And they've had to be really strategic as we remained conservative around the use of one-time monies intentionally, knowing that, you know, you just never know when these swings are going to come. And also us being a declining enrollment district, we knew that we were going to have to be very mindful and careful with one-time monies because the district actually had a history of using one-time monies for ongoing costs, which is what was one of the drivers that, that put the district previously in, 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 on the verge of fiscal insolvency. So we were, we, the district learned that lesson and did a lot of hard work to get us stable. So we were very strategic and the instructional team has been very strategic. And now they will engage in evaluation process in order to really think about what are the ongoing investments that we can support. So I appreciate their flexibility, their patience, and their fiscal mindfulness as they are charged with, you know, improving the instruction for kids. It's hard to work within those constraints, right? So they've also done a really great job. So I just want to thank everybody for their effort and then just thank the board for your, you know, your, your commitment to fiscal stewardship alongside your commitment to improving student achievement levels. Both things have to happen simultaneously. So thank you.
Yes. And what I appreciate is getting all this information in a timely fashion and not being given, not being given to us in the form of a horrid revelation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do we have any public comments on this, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
Oh, that's very unfortunate because this is an informative item. Thank you. 10-minute break, 10 minutes strictly enforced. Okay. Next, we have K2, Instructional Services. Yes, Mr. Manning is presenting.
Thank you. Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member McGrath and Dr. Musetti. I am introducing for your consideration this evening an online learning program called Freckle English Language Arts. It's a renaissance, a product of Renaissance K-12 software, as are our STAR suite of STAR assessments that we use in NVSD. So teachers with this online program are able to pull STAR reports and then assign targeted standards-based ELA lessons to students. Using Freckle, they can assign specific lessons for students based on their needs or lessons to the whole class if there's a whole class need that shows up in their reports. There's also targeted student goal setting that students can engage in so that students are monitoring, monitoring their own progress in their learning, which we know is a research-based best practice for students. We also see, we do see significant potential. Is this not the right item? Oh, we did, oh, okay. So we see significant potential with this program to support differentiated instruction for our students. We will use STAR data to measure the impact of this program on student achievement. And again, because it's embedded in the STAR as, as part of Renaissance, we'll be able to really seamlessly evaluate the, the efficacy of this program.
If, if this is found to be a successful program, do we have plans to then scale this across the district?
We could potentially scale this up across the district. What we would like to do is poised, be poised. We're currently engaging in, in a, in a research study and evaluation of imagined language and literacy. So we are, we, we anticipate that we will see strong student growth in relation to ILL. But we want to be poised to adopt and, and scale up additional programs as needed, again, to support differentiate, differentiation of instruction in ELA.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to say it sounds like a really amazing tool and it makes such sense to, to have it be part of the suite of Renaissance. It wouldn't make sense to use a tool that, that wasn't, that, that didn't align as closely. And I'm excited to see the impact. It sounds like a really agile tool for teachers to use. So thanks.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a comment? Thank you very much.
So you need to go.
Okay, so that was, do we have, sorry. Do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment.
No public comments. Thank you. All right. So that was actually K2B, and we're going to go back to K2A, which is Introduction of Revised Board Policy and Regulation 6174, Education for English Learners.
Yes, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings will speak to this item.
Good evening again, Board President Water and Board Trustees. During our most recent federal program monitoring, one of the reviewers identified language in our board policy and ARs that needed to be more specific around how we classified our English learners. And so they asked for us to add language, specifically calling out that the overall performance level had to be level four on the LPAC or the alternate, alternate assessment. And so that language has been added to the board policy for, for approval and as well as the AR.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any public comment on this? Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
No comments from the board? Thank you. Okay. Now we are going on to Introduction of Supplementary Instructional Material Adoption for Elementary Schools.
Thank you. I have one additional program to introduce this evening. So the Arts Integration and STEAM Accelerator is an online program that we will be using potentially with your approval at one of our two newest magnet elementary schools, McPherson Elementary School. And this will be used by teachers to develop their STEAM-themed, STEAM-themed units of study. So it will be used primarily, primarily as a tool for building their unit, units of study. And it does include lessons that students can pull, that teachers can pull from to build into the, into their units of study. It also includes assessments that teachers can use and prompts teachers to select instructional strategies that will be the most effective to move forward student learning as part of their units of study. And we're also very excited that this program includes embedded professional learning modules for teachers. So they'll be able to engage in professional learning around STEAM unit development as they're pulling in the lessons and assessments from this program.
Well, thank you. Should I ask for public comments now? Public comments, Mr. Michael, do we have any?
There is no public comment on this item.
Still no public comment. Well, geez, do you, Dr. Trustee Gracia?
So I wanted to say that I, I really appreciated this and the previous report where we got a little more information about these proposed curriculum adoptions. The form that is attached to inform us about the curriculum adoptions is very minimal. It doesn't really give us much information. So these presentations were very helpful tonight, so thank you. But I'd want to encourage you guys to look into revising those forms for future approvals because they don't really convey much to the public or us.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback and certainly our goal is to provide the Board of Trustees with, with the information that you need to make informed decisions. So we will get to work on, on improving that form to meet your needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Microphone. Next, we have Section L, Action Items. One, General Services A, Adoption of California School Board Associations. CSBA Recommended Policy Updates, September 2023.
Move to approve.
Okay. Okay, so that's first from Trustee Gracia. I need a second. Trustee Hart, second from Trustee Hart. Okay, public comments? Do we have public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right. So all in, Student Board Member, Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Any abstentions? No. So that passes unanimously. Okay. General Services B, Adoption of California School Board Association. CSBA Recommended Special Policy Updates on October 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. First from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Chu. Mr., excuse me, Mr. Hart, Trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? None? Unanimous? Oh, sorry, Student Board Rep.
Aye.
You're going to have to remind me of that. Thank you. Business Services A, First Interim 2023, four.
Move to approve.
Okay. First from Trustee Gracia.
A second.
Second from Trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
No public comment? All right. Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, unanimous? Okay. Two B is Agreement with Checkpoint Harmony Email Security.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A first from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right. Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. B, agree, sorry, C, Agreement with Privad Virtual Server Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A first from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
All righty. And Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, passes unanimously. Three, Human Resources A, University of Wisconsin Affiliation Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A first from, first motion from Trustee Gracia, second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Passes unanimously. B, 3B is Agreement with University of Minnesota.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A first from, first motion from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Passes unanimously. 3C, Eastern New Mexico University Affiliation Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. First from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
No public comment. Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Unanimous? Okay. Four, Instructional Services A, Certification of Comprehensive School Safety Plans.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. First from Trustee Gracia, second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, unanimous? 4B is Paper Educational Support System Service Agreement.
Move to approve.
First from Gracia.
Second.
Second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Passes unanimously. 4C, Agreement with Lexia Learning Systems LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a first from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Passes unanimously. 4D, Interagency Agreement Between Napa Valley Unified School District and Child Start Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Second.
A first from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
A Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Passes unanimously. 4E, 2023 Preventing School Violence, BJAs Stop School Violence Grant Award and Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, first from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment on this item.
Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Passes unanimously. Memorandum of Under... Oh, excuse me, 4F, Memorandum of Understanding Between Up Valley Family Centers of Napa County UVFC and Napa Valley Adult School NVAE.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a first from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Passes unanimously. Five, Operational Services, Facility Use Agreement Between Napa Valley Unified School District and Buck Institute for Education.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this?
There's no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Passes unanimously. City of... Excuse me, 5B, City of Napa Temporary Construction Isment and Right of Entry Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, first from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Passes unanimously. Number six, School Planning and Construction. 6A is SPC 1.6-24 Renewal Agreement with Stradling, Yoka, Carlson, and Ralph.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any comments on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Trustee McGrath? Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Passes unanimously. Okay, informational. One, General Services A, Curriculum and Student Support Committee, Lisa Chu, Eve Reiser, Cindy Water.